All right, we'll call the meeting in order. Please stand for the presidential allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the real public for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call. Tom Schwaehafer.
Here.
Neil McKenzie.
Here.
Ellen Jones.
Here.
Carol Kouchard.
Here.
James Arlo.
Here.
Chris Reitz.
Here.
Roger Belec.
Here.
Lance Sertie. Here. We have a call. All right, I will entertain a motion for agenda approval.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
Okay, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Nays. Motion passes. Next on the agenda is I will entertain a motion for approval of the minutes. Oh, wait a minute. No, I'm not. I take that back. Yes, I would like to open the public hearing at six seventeen.
Yep.
If there's anybody that would like to speak, Ashley, I would like to have Alexa please speak on the Jarvis property.
Yes. Eight-five forty River Road. Propose rezoning request.
Okay, good evening. Can you hear me okay?
Yep.
All right. My name is Alexis. I work with Ashley and Brian who were here at your last meeting and they're at a conference this week, so I'm just helping fill in, but I'm familiar with the case and here to present so that when folks come and share their thoughts, they have an idea of what the request is for. So, thanks for having me tonight, and I just wanted to mention as well that as township planner, we're just here in an advisory role and ultimately you, our recommendation is truly a recommendation where I'm happy to answer questions, but the decision is ultimately yours. So, I'll just provide a brief overview. I know that a lot of folks are familiar with this case, but tonight the hearing is for a request to rezone the subject site from the B two general business district to the R one O one-family residential district. The subject site is located on the west side of River Road and is currently being utilized as for a single-family home. We understand that there are many non-conforming, single-family homes in this area that are zoned B two, and so the applicants want to rezone to how the property is being used. So, in Cottrellville, the ordinance does not have any rezoning standards, so in our review tonight, we offered a variety of different considerations for you. These are things that are basically best practice in planning and zoning, but they're not criteria that this request must meet to obtain your approval. So, I just wanted to mention that these are sort of best practice, but if they don't meet each one of them, that doesn't mean that they should be denied or something like that. So, I'll just give a brief overview of some of those key points in the memo. I'm happy to answer questions, but I know that you've all had a chance to review it. So, to start with number one, is the requested rezoning consistent with the master plan? And the short answer is yes. So, the master plan, which was adopted in 2020, is envisioning this area to be residential, which is how it's been used for many years. We're not quite sure why it got rezoned to B two over the decades, but we understand that there is a need for housing and a desire for housing in this area, and so we find that that's an appropriate and supported use and zoning designation within your master And so, the actual future land use designation in the plan is waterfront residential and something that I know has been talked about a lot and that will continue to be discussed as you pursue an updated master plan and eventually someday, an updated zoning ordinance, is that there are these non-conformities. Some of them are non-conforming uses, and we also have a lot of non-conforming structures. So, tonight, if you were to rezone to the R one O district, it would take away that non-conforming status for the use. It would make it a conforming use in that district, which is what we want. That's ideal, right? And, but, under the current ordinance, the dimensional standards, so things like setbacks, aren't necessarily going to be fixed by rezoning the property. And part of that is that the current ordinance doesn't necessarily have standards that align with how the township has developed. There are a lot of smaller lots, especially along the waterfront, that there aren't necessarily, there isn't a waterfront residential district in your zoning ordinance at this time that aligns with those smaller lots along the waterfront, and that's something that can be addressed over time. Additionally, we find that, you know, there are no concerns in terms of being served by public utilities. That's covered under number two on page two of the memo, if you're following along. And for the potential other uses in the R one O district, you know, this consideration here is often a concern when you're upzoning. So, if you were to be rezoning a residential property to a business, you know, the opposite of what this request is, you might have concerns because you're increasing the intensity, you're maybe increasing the traffic, but that's not happening here. We're actually downzoning, and it's also, again, aligning with how the property and surrounding properties have been used for many years. So, we don't have any concern in terms of any potential uses that are permitted in the proposed district causing any incompatibility. And in the R one O district, with this site, it's so small, it's about a quarter of an acre. Really, the only thing you could physically fit within the building envelope is a home. And so, you know, within the district, the only permitted uses are dwellings, home occupations, daycare, some accessory types of uses, publicly owned operations such as parks, libraries, things of that nature. But what I am getting at is that the site is so small, you're not likely to find a library there. It's likely to be used as a single-family home. So, we don't have any concerns there with that, and then I'm gonna kind of skip over some of these because we just don't have any concern with them. I'm happy to, again, answer questions if needed. So, going on to page four, looking at number six in the memo, is there evidence of demand for the types of uses that are permitted in the residential district? And our short answer is yes. We know that there's a demand for housing, especially along this stretch. We know folks want to live by the water and want to vacation by the water, and so the short answer is that yes, we know there's a demand for additional housing. And then, moving along, looking at page five, again, looking at some of the dimensional standards in the ordinance as it stands today. While there is a non-conforming setback for the primary structure, the home itself, there are some non-conforming setbacks. Processing this rezoning will actually reduce that non-conformity because the setback requirements are smaller. So, even though it will remain non-conforming, you're improving it, which within planning and zoning, you're always trying to make small improvements over time. Additionally, I understand there's a garage in the rear of the lot, and while this rezoning won't address that issue and the non-conformity of the layout of the structures, your task tonight is really to think about the use and the zoning district itself and the types of permitted uses that might be there. So, while it would be great if we could address the non-conformity piece of this, I just wanted to mention that that's not necessarily a big consideration for your decision tonight. And so, moving forward, our recommendation is for approval of the rezoning tonight. You'll have to make a recommendation to the township board, who has the ultimate decision on this. We've got a template motion in the memo just for ease of use, but if you have any questions or if you need to, you know, shift the motion language depending on the outcome of the hearing or your discussion, again, it's just a recommendation. So, I'm happy to answer questions following the public hearing.
All right.
Thank you.
All right, is there anybody else that would like to speak for the public hearing for the rezoning?
Roger Iannucci, eight-five-three-nine River Road. I'd like to see this table for rezoning. They have not moved the garage. It's on my property still, shown by their survey, which is on page, the last page and the second from last page on our application, by about three feet, two point nine to be exact. I've heard that they were gonna take it down, then they're gonna fix it. They're still on a stop work order because they haven't complied with moving it. If you approve this, it's like siding with them and not with me. It's still on my property, so the fight goes on. They haven't done anything to do it at all. Yet, the renovations to their home, they've had their crews trespassing on my property, hanging off the roof with lights at night, doing the work, like I'm not gonna see them. My cameras have it all on film, but they won't get the insurance to cover me. A lousy couple hundred bucks, but no, they're gonna jeopardize these guys' safety for that and my liabilities? No. I asked the board to table this. When they remove that garage, secondly, then get me insurance. I told them from the beginning, get me a licensed contractor with insurance, you can use my property. They failed to do any of the above. So, I'm asking the board to table this until that garage is moved off my property. I wouldn't mind to look like the township is in favor of one resident to another. It's just, it's untenable that they're still continuing to go on and on. They've tried to circumvent everything here. They didn't want to get permits for this. They called it that, only after they got caught is when they pulled permits. So, I don't know how far it's all gone, and that's not my business. My business is get that garage moved. And I've asked media time. You called me a bully, and you even said that garage was coming down. You yourself.
No, sir.
Oh, your nephew was gonna take it down.
No, no, no.
Okay, all right. Anyway, let's not argue about that.
Okay, you're good.
We can move the garage. And after all the day you called me last time.
Okay.
We'll do this another time.
Let's address the board, please.
That's all I have to say.
Okay, sir. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else that would like to address the board on this situation?
I will. Rachel Schaff, eight-five-one-eight River Road. They live on the other side of Mr. Iannucci's property to me. I, for one, I support the rezoning request at R one. I believe it will only help the overall area. In fact, my house is up for rezoning at the next board also. But I fully support the idea of having a comfortable home where they can age in peace comfortably and have a nice home and a beautiful backdrop to enjoy aging in peace and in their retirement years. Much like that.
All right, thank you. Is there anybody else that would address the board on this issue?
I live at eighty-five-forty River Road with my wife Amy. We were co-owners of that house. We, when we were looking, I'll give you some quick history. We were looking for a place for us to move to for a couple of years because I'm a hundred percent disabled vet permanently, and I needed a different sort of environment to live in, and that's the sort of thing that we're living, we're looking for. Twenty-five people of Amy's family live within forty-five minutes of here. Her grandfather had a cottage about ten minutes down the road years ago. We've visited Marine City several times, and we love the people in this area. We've really found it hospitable. I have three VAs that I go to, Detroit, Yale, and Ann Arbor, all of them easy access from here. I love it here, and it's easy to get to. It's easy to find people to do the work that we need to get done when we can do it and talk to the people that know how to do it. To address other issues outside of the zoning, that's a legal issue, and we have talked to attorneys, and we will continue to do that and follow their advice. So, that's where I'm at on that. I appreciate your attention.
All right. Thank you.
Yeah, we have not committed to taking down the garage, never have. We've always been asked to take it down, never offered to help because he needs it or wants it or something. It's always been, you need to do that. So, that's been a bit of a deflection point, I guess. It has created a roundabout nature of how his interactions have become with us. He no longer comes directly to us to speak about things, even though from the very get-go, we knew there was, we didn't know there was a problem when we bought it. He surveyed it after we bought it. He owned it for six years. Six years he owned it, cleared the land, and then had it surveyed after we bought it in April. So, we arrived and came to learn that there's a survey problem. So, we had it surveyed. We also had it resurveyed because there's an occupied land with an old nineteen-sixties fence that clearly shows the garage has been there since the eighties. The wood inside the building is time stamped with nineteen-eighty-nine, and we have consulted with five different lawyers and tried, we would like to try to do this civilly out of court and speak to him directly, but it's become a circus. And he's tried everything to, I wanna say jeopardize or minimize our ability to move forward and accusing us of living in a place that you can't live in and renovate at the same time. And, you know, it's been challenging, you know? It's this, this building and home, it's been a home since nineteen-sixty-seven when they started renovating it for the antique shop. There's historical record about that. The sewer and water line paperwork from the city shows it was established in seventy-two as a residential. It was a restaurant before that. It was business, 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 and the post office for Robert's Landing in the eighteen-sixties. So, it has an extraordinary history, and we're not ones to wipe out history. Actually, we would really like to embrace and stabilize the building so that it's not torn down. A lot of people, in foreseeing this home, it was definitely, and still has a lot of challenges to it, but it immediately appeared as like so much neglect because previous residents lived in it, aged in place, husband died, Glenn has aged in place to age ninety-two, and then when she died, the family sold it. So, that's, that's the history of how it's actually been lived in. So, when we were forced with potential to not continue to stabilize this home as a home, it was a bit of a shock, for one thing. When we first arrived, we had the township, Greg, Barb, and Nick all stood in the hallway with us and said, yeah, do what you need to do to make it safe and, you know, get rid of the knob and tube and get rid of the old boiler from nineteen-sixty-seven and get rid of the animals, you know? It's like there was a lot to be done. So, so we embarked on that, and then when the actual reconstruction of the building started, you know, the unveiling of how much had to be done just kept continuing, and that's where our contractors were harassed. You know, we've had sheriffs called out twice by Mr. Iannucci about this idea of that they're hovering over his land because they did their best to try to construct a support system so that they weren't physically on his land, but they, you know, had a thing built off of our wall to then finish the roof in the front, and he still calls the police and watches from a camera somewhere else. He's not even home. So, it's been, it's been a bizarre challenge in terms of all that. And as far as the garage goes, there's never been an acknowledgement on our part to tear it down. When we got the correct builder, the current builder who replaced the roofs, who internally looked at it, found a very, very sound structure, eight inches of cement, solid floors, never cracked in forty-five years, nine studs that were, had to be replaced, nineteen studs maybe out of a hundred and thirty. You know, there was plywood in the bottom that had to be replaced, but that was it. And, and we didn't have a permit on it because it was a repair. It wasn't a rebuild. It was just take care, fix, like the township had told us to do. Take care of what you've got, and people keep reassuring us that that's how you do things here. You take care of your property. So, that's what we've been trying to do, and we don't have any intention of taking it down.
All right. Thank you.
Can I add to that?
Sure.
I don't want them not to live there or not to fix their home, first off. Secondly, all I'm asking more than anything is to move the garage, which is movable. Your contractor even told me so. So, he can move it off the property. It's not a big issue. I've even gotten them a quote to do it. They accepted the quote, but they didn't go forward with anything.
Excuse me.
I don't mean accepted as far as I gave you the quote, not that you accepted doing.
And told us to move it, so.
Well, I asked you to move it at first, and then I said, then you have to move it. Thank you.
All righty, is there anybody? Go ahead, Ms.
Should I have to go then?
Please.
This is somewhere for a long time, so, no nonsense. Susan Richardson, eight-five-four-seven River Road, next to dear Mr. Iannucci and his wife Ingrid. Our kids went to school together. We love them. New neighbors. Amy's very special to me in my heart. Critt, no, I don't know him enough yet. So, I'm really very neutral in this, but being, I only said business owner because there's certain things you can do or not do in life, you know? If you push it, or there's kindness from people's heart, that, okay, I'm a neighbor, how can we work this out? And just from looking at nice people, and I know Roger's heart, I believe I do, because if anything to help, ask his neighbors, anybody he can. I don't know, you know, sometimes people get their things in a knot because, you know, somebody perceives that this is a demand, or maybe it did come across as a demand, or being bullied because of business people. I've been told at times that I was a bully, being a business owner. Don't mean to be, don't mean to come across that way, but sometimes when you're busy directing people all the time, it may seem that way. Knowing Roger as much as I do, I would think that he would be, if it's possible, he would help you trim it just enough to get it off the property, you know, or whatever, help you move it, you know, because it's a big expense for retired people.
I offered that help, but even letting the contractor.
Okay, okay, wait, wait. Okay, so, again, knowing Roger, I get to answer that, not that you offered it, I'm asking, I guess, as a neighbor and longtime family kid's friend, is would you be willing to do that as a neighborly thing for all of us in the neighborhood?
Move it or come short.
Whatever you guys would come together and, and agree on.
Oh, we haven't come together or anything.
I understand that, but whatever you would come to agree with, would you have been?
Side part of that would be that they have to conform with the township, which requires another three feet into their property by code.
Okay, well, a lot of things aren't by code in this little township.
That's speed of moving.
Again, the neighbor, I'm not talking about the neighborly things. I'm talking about neighbor and what's really important, I mean, we are less than gnats standing here, you know, in the, in the scheme of it all, or what's important. But this is important to people that are within our five or six homes, because there's not a lot of us, and we really kind of look out for each other's homes and each other, and, you know, Scott knows if I sneeze, wrong, you know, and is she okay? And I do the same thing, where is he? Where is he? I don't see him. Is he okay? Things like that, that's great. That's what rural living is about, really. So, these are my thoughts and wishes, and I will pray about it as well. So, I think, I think if people try enough to put the past a little bit behind them and let's go from now and see how we could truly help each other in a godly way, that would help tons. That's all I got.
All right. Thank you. Thank you. Is there anybody else that would like to speak? All righty, thank you. We'll close the public hearing and...
Sure. I'd like to say something.
Okay.
I thought there was more to do with this neighborhood than I thought.
Well, you've been missing out. Now, we're kind of off the ball.
I hear about junkyard Joe.
Okay, well, this is the public hearing for them.
Well, how do I get a public hearing?
There. We will have public comments on the agenda.
Well, I'll be here.
All right, sir.
That one's coming up next. Don't start, hold on.
All right, is there anybody else that would like to speak about the public here?
I live next to them. Now, this boundary issue that's been going on consistently, this boundary has been established over fifty years ago. I know this for a fact. That garage has been there this long, and all of a sudden now, I know there's a law after fifteen years, the new boundary gets introduced. So, they all go to the lawyer like they shouldn't have themselves, because they both had legitimate excuse, reason to be upset, but the fact is, it's not gonna get settled between them. So, if they don't take it to the lawyer and honor whatever that judge decides to do, this is gonna continue. And you, of all people, know when we changed our to R one, same with Susan, same with you, same with myself, so we could have a residential area, so he could build his house on the river. Everyone was in agreement. We didn't have a problem with that. Now, all of a sudden, this home is an issue because of that. That's a small problem. That can be solved in the, in the court without any issues following up. But what I've seen, police showing up, all this stuff, and Roger keeps saying, well, I tell them they can have, you know, they can work through, just give me insurance. Why can't they just give me a written statement, say I'm responsible for myself, and let these people finish this job? And it's been personal, I understand that. But also, when they rebuilt Susan and his house, they went to extreme. Nobody gave them a hard time about it, because that's the community that we're in. And when he sits here and I witness what goes on and all this stuff happening, this shouldn't be going on. We're a community. We all should be friendly, and if there's an issue between them, settle it. It's not gonna be settled by being mean to each other and trying to get that unsettled because one demands this and one demands that. It's never gonna happen. If it doesn't go to the court, this is gonna continue on. And to table this is just one more step to stall, and I don't feel that should happen because this issue's not gonna go away until it gets to that courthouse. They both have legitimate reasons, like I said. When Roger bought that six years ago, he never had it surveyed, so he didn't think there was a problem. I understand that. But when he did, all of a sudden now they're the enemy. When they bought the place, that didn't come up. I had the same problem with the township, but I didn't have any problem because they understood what it was. understood what it was. I had the same issue, the boundary, this was set. So I got it resolved, reset, no problem. Nobody argued about it. And everybody's happy. But this is getting out of hand. Now he says, well, we can, well, I got news for you. I've been watching from my house, I can see what goes on, and they have been touring it. You know, this is how we welcome newcomers to our community with this type of activity? I don't agree with that. If there's an issue, settle it and still be friends. There's always going to be disputes. But what's happening at this point, the contractor, okay, he's a little, him out of town, but he does a good job, and he put himself in danger because Roger wouldn't grant him any space, two feet, one foot, whatever it would have taken to put that edging out. He had to hang over the side of the roof. And as soon as he saw on the camera that somebody stepped on the property, he's calling the police. I want him arrested. He's trespassing.
No.
Is this how this goes on?
He was afraid of danger. He was afraid of liability.
I'm saying, I saw the police come twice.
John here's an electrician. He carries liability insurance. Am I correct? I do. He's a contractor we pay for, okay? I'm a contractor.
I understand that. But not everybody is.
No, 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 no. Scott, it's not a contractor issue here. Somebody falls and gets hurt, ends up crippled. Who's going to pay their bills for the rest of their life? The guy they can sue.
So you're telling me a signed affidavit from anybody?
No, it's not. It's absolutely not.
I have a friend who's crippled because he fell off a subway.
All right, yeah, let's keep it. Please address the board, sir.
Okay, well, we won't argue about it. That's between you guys and a lawyer. So that's what I'm going to say. It's got to stop. Everyone wants to move on in the future. Everyone wants to be happy. We want to be friendly. But we can't have this aggravation every time we turn around. If I was them, I'd have a different view, because I know he's got a camera. I know he's saying it's on his property, but he's watching them.
I'm watching my property.
I know you're going to say that, but we all know what it's for. You worried about ants tripping on your property?
No, I'm just...
Just the volume of land we're talking about, two-point-eight-nine feet by thirty feet, it's not a lot. And I had Barbara assess the value from the price of the land, and it was two-hundred-and-seventy-two dollars. And she said, don't quote me, it's not a real estate, blah, 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 whatever. But that's, this is what we're talking about. Every human being I've shared this story with is rather shocked that there is even an issue for somebody to demand that they reclaim this two feet, two-point-eight-nine feet by thirty feet? And there's clearly an alignment with Scott and Luisa's fence in the back there. The very exact same line is in alignment with the old occupied land. You can come see it. It's still there, the old wire fence with the green posts that we all climbed as kids. It is still, sorry, it is still there in the back. So again, the amount of land, we don't understand the issue, quite honestly. How much is that actually going to benefit his one-point-three-seven acre development? You know, six hundred square feet. We're sort of amazed. I don't know what to say.
All righty, thank you. Sir?
I'll make it short. John Stevenson, eighty-five-oh-seven River Road, neighbors. I would like to see it rezoned to residential. I mean, they're fixing it up. It's been a house for a long time. The garage issue, I didn't know anything about it till I got here tonight, so, I mean, that kind of needs to be taken care of between the two different parties, I would say. But anyways, I am for the residential rezoning.
All right, sir. Thank you. Is there anybody else that would like to speak? All right, we're going to close the public hearing at six fifty-two. All right, I don't believe we have any guest speakers tonight. I will entertain a motion to approve the minutes of September twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty-five. No motion?
No second.
All righty, with a motion and a second, is there any discussion? All righty, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Communications, I don't believe we have any. Public comments for agenda items only. Mr. Tom, would you like? Your turn, sir.
You know, this has been going on for five years, you know? Maybe it's time we take it and put it in front of the public and have them vote, and then you got to act on it.
What, the topic you're speaking to, sir, just for... What's the topic?
Well, no.
Mr. Tredways?
Yeah, Mr. Tredway.
Okay.
I mean, five years. See, I've called other communities. You jump through the hoops before you get the license. You don't give the light guy the license and hope he jumps through the hoops. He puts up a fence, nice fence. Where's the four-foot berm? And the fence is made out of combustible material. So how do we get a vote on this? I want the public to vote on this. How do, what do I got to do?
I don't think the public has jurisdiction to vote on this.
Well, apparently you guys don't.
What do you mean by that?
It keeps going on and on. The junk's still there, it's just on the other side of the fence.
Well, there is a site plan review tonight, and that's what we were going, we are going to discuss.
Yeah. I hear another thirty days. I'm sure that one's in jail.
All righty, is there anybody else that would like to speak on anything on the agenda All righty, we're going to move to unfinished business. Number one is rezoning application for Iannucci Building and Development Incorporated from B-two to R-M-one. Would anybody like to entertain a motion?
Discussion wise, multiple family residents, though it's not required, we were never given any feedback. And I'll say that again, it's not required, but we're never given feedback in density, which is something we had talked about. And does that fit with the long-term vision of where the township's going, based on, you know, some of the survey data we've been coming back for our updated master plan?
Traffic issues, blind spots?
Increased human density.
If we want to table possibly on the grounds of this garage, which is encroaching on this R-M request, how can we not table that as well until the garage issue?
Well, Mr. Iannucci made a request to table it, but I'm not sure, speaking for myself only, that tabling the dispute on the property line exists now as a B-two, and it will most likely exist in any other format going forward.
Roger, okay.
As the, as the planner already stated, the garage issue has really nothing to do with this board.
That's a matter outside of us.
That's a matter outside of this board.
Right, exactly. Okay. So shouldn't we not all be R-one man?
What's that mean?
Shouldn't we all be R-R-one?
That's the question that will be coming up when we get to new business on this.
Correct.
On driver's issue. We have to walk through it.
One thing at a time. This was already on, this is unfinished business from the last meeting. Tom, yes?
All right. Now, the biggest concern I have with it is the picture that I saw of the building that's being proposed doesn't aesthetically fit well with the area. I don't know if that can be changed or not.
That was just a sketch. It was not a block in, it didn't have colors or any of that deep previous. There's several pictures that you could have seen.
Okay, well, the only one I saw was a real...
They were all in the same application.
The concept's wrong. Nothing's been finalized because we don't have an approval for R-M-one. Well, therefore, we're not going to proceed forward when our project set of costs is seventy-five to a hundred thousand dollars until we get a designation.
Okay.
That has to be part of the planning commission as well, right?
Yeah. It would, but I don't want to make a decision and then find out that I have, we have another fight over what's going to go in there. That's all I'm going to...
Everything you've asked of me to find the information, the proof, I've handed over.
Yeah.
I postponed. This is the third time now, so...
I think the question I have is that it's one-point-three-seven acres, but a majority of that would be roadway into potential buildings. And so I don't, I know that there's point-two-five acre needed per building, so I don't know what the proposal is in terms of his numbers of units. That's not clear.
It's incorrect. Twenty-five percent rule. Twenty-five percent of lot coverage. Currently, the lot is one-point-three-five acres. One acre is forty-three-thousand-five-hundred-and-sixty square feet. Point-three-five is fifteen-thousand-two-forty-six. Combined lot is fifty-eight-thousand-eight-hundred-and-six square feet.
But a majority of that will be road.
Doesn't matter. That has nothing to do with it. We're talking buildable structure. Within the buildable envelope, I can build, or you can build, twenty-five percent rule of coverage. Twenty-five percent of that equals fourteen-thousand-seven-hundred-one square feet of that lot that can be built on with buildings. Roads do not count, do not count, neither do curbs or sidewalks.
Okay, so then roughly how many units can you put on there according to that?
Based on those numbers, twenty-seven, point-two-two units can go on there, and they can be designed to go on there. We've already spoken to engineers. Do we say we can put twenty-seven on, or we want to put them on? No. What we're asking for is a designation from B-two to R-M-one. Otherwise, he can sell it to somebody that could put a diner there, a self-storage unit, a twenty-four-hour restaurant, whatever, because he has a B-two designation. So to clear this up, he doesn't want to do B-two. He wants to do an R-M-one so we can actually build on it. Otherwise, he can stay as B-two, and he can do a B-two development there, which nobody wants. I don't think anybody wants a twenty-four-hour restaurant, or an auto parts store, or a self-storage area going to look at campers and boats. We're, they're trying to beautify this to make this a property that'll raise everybody's property values. To conceptualize, I don't have to provide that yet, because you don't have a designation yet. You know what I mean? That's like getting the cart before the horse. So what I'm saying is, with all due respect, if we don't get the designation for R-M-one, our group is done. We're out. He's going to keep it as B-two. He's already said that to me, and he's got other people looking at it. I don't think you want a seven-eleven. I don't think you want a diner. Those B-two designations, it's there. And then that's not, that's an uphill fight for everybody, because he's got it already. He doesn't have to ask you for anything other than submit plans, get the approval for it. So we're trying to build something that's going to build everybody's property values and raise them. We're not trying to run a circus here. I've done the new builds, as I've done my homework. The last fight was that it wasn't one-point-three-five acres. We go back to the engineers, guess what? You guys had it from day one. You had all the designation here in the office showing it was one-point-three-five acre. The oneness was thrown back on us, as the one gentleman so eloquently said. Well, we provided that. Now, I don't think anybody wants a business there. We want to beautify the property. We want property values. Obviously, we're a for-profit business, but it's not about that. We're about creating something, a legacy, something that people can enjoy. The people that are moving there will enjoy it, they'll take pride in ownership. This isn't some scumbour running an apartment complex, and I got dumpsters pulling in there. That's not how this is going to run. But if I don't have a designation, then I can't plan around that, and I'm not going to spend another seventy-five to a hundred thousand dollars only to come back and find out that nobody on the board is going to approve it, and I'm hitting denials from everybody else. One would think that you would want a residential, you would want a residential build there. With the, with the cost of the infrastructure alone, we're talking six-hundred thousand dollars. I'm investing six million dollars. I don't know if anybody realizes the density there and the magnitude of the project. That's a six-million-dollar investment. What is the tax base to the city? Can you provide more police? Yes. Can you provide more lighting? Yes. Can you, can you control the traffic? Yes. All of those items are favorable to you.
Well, I think the concern is, once you increase the intensity, you're going to require those things. You're going to require more police, because you're going to have a higher burden on the local municipality.
But then we have to pay for it. If you put a business in there, you require more police, who's paying that? You got one business, he's going to, he's going to be, he's going to be taxed at a business rate. Is he going to provide more police? Is he going to provide more protection? No.
That's undetermined.
Well, in forty years, I know for a fact, I've done a lot of building in forty years, over twenty-nine thousand projects, I can tell you for certain, what I'm telling you is true. You guys can research. Go to Google. It's nothing that I'm making up. This is research. This is proven. I'm not trying to do anything other than build a development that is going to raise property value.
We understand that, you understand that your goal is to be successful.
Right, we're not, I don't want to argue with anybody. And as we spoke before with regards to the garage, what, just what they...
No, hang on a second.
Don't we have to take this one step at a time? First of all, is that whole area going to be R-one? And then after that, don't you have to okay the things that go on that? In other words, if they're going to do it all residential first, do we still not have the say on what kind of residential gets built on there? Are we, by saying the one, are we doing all of it?
We're looking right now to vote tonight if it's going to be multiple dwelling or single-family dwelling.
So that's a different designation?
Correct. R-M is for multiple dwelling.
Yeah, residential multiple. R-one is residential, single-family dwelling.
Based on the master plan, it's a place right now, the designation is B-two, R-one, R-M-one, correct?
Yes, for certain parcels there, yes.
Right, so then we're, we're well within our rights to apply for R-M-one.
No one's saying you're not in your rights for application.
Okay. You have one right across the street. It's already existed.
But to me, to also extrapolate here with the neighbor, right? It's not about being nasty with the neighbor. Here's the problem, and I just want to speak from the building aspect. I apply for a permit. I got to have insurance, right? As a licensed builder, I can't do anything about insurance. I'm required to supply it to you. I'm required to supply my builder's license, my driver's license. You guys have all that on tap. Everything that I'm doing, I have to let the city know. I have to give you a set of plans, and sometimes those plans have to be stamped and sealed by an engineer. That's the new things, correct. Number one. Number two, what happens if I start the project and then I find out that I can't meet the rear and side setbacks because the building is encroaching the property? Then what? I'm, I'm the one who is going to lose out, right? Because I can't build there. So therefore, it's not two-hundred-and-seventy-two dollars, it could be five-hundred thousand dollars, because I can't maximize what's there. I'm investing six million dollars. So for somebody to move the garage, three feet and then three feet back, he's offered to help, he got the quote.
Again, the property line dispute is still outside of...
I understand, but think about it from, from my designation. What I'm asking for, the next order of business is going to be if I have a side yard setback issue. Then I've got a problem on my hands, because the garage is encroaching the property. I don't want to buy something encumbered. I want to buy something unencumbered, for which I can get my engineers, my architects, to draw and plot something that's going to be great for the community and great for us. Now, if it's encumbered and I can't, I can't achieve that, what do you expect me to do?
I believe everything you just said. So as a planning commission, one of our jobs is, we're the primary conduit for community input, for the vision of new construction as the township goes forward. That is one of our primary roles, and that is our concern tonight, I think, on the multiple residential versus a single-family dwelling.
And I could a hundred percent appreciate you guys, right? Because you guys hear a bunch of complaint from everybody, and it's... Because you guys hear a bunch of complaint from everybody, and it's your job to sort through the noise and make a decision based on information, an educated decision based on information. That's not, we're not trying to bully anything through here, guys. We're trying to build something that's going to be beneficial for the township, beneficial for us, beneficial for the residents in the neighborhood, because it raises property values. To leave a raw piece of property with weeds growing on it and trees, it's not beneficial for anyone. You take advantage of that piece of property and you build it so everybody benefits from it, right? Because you're going to have a park next door, and that's going to be beneficial. And you got the park down the street, and that's beneficial. You, you have a gem here. You have a jewel. The jewel is, is that God doesn't make water property anymore. We've got one piece where people can look at it, they can enjoy it, then you got the park across the street and people can enjoy it. It's taking advantage of what's available to us. We're, we're just asking for everybody to work in harmony here. We're not trying to do anything that's outside the box.
Well, when the harmony question comes into, a lot of the public input we've taken in, even from the very first hearing, has been, at this point, my keeping track is almost a two to one against. So, from the harmony aspect, again, I, I believe everything you said. I, I believe that, you know, by your calculations, there's a, probably a potentially great financial solution at the end of it, on your end. But again, on our, on our end, we are the pri, we are the primary conduit for the community input, for the development going forward. And that's where I, speaking for myself, I am seeing conflict.
Well, there's conflict in everything in, in this entire world, right? There's conflict. It's just how, if you're solution minded and you come up with a resolution to the conflict, right? So, the way that I look at it is totally different because it's a piece of property and it has the designation. It can be done. The twenty-five percent rule is in play. That's, that's your best rules. That's not mine. I'm playing, I'm playing on the field, right? So, I present everything to you, and then the goalposts keep getting moved back. If I know the rules to the game, I can play the rule, I can play the game. I can play on that field. But every time the goalposts get moved back, then I got to keep coming back, coming back, coming back.
Well, I think project, solution finding, and community representation are not exactly the same, same thing here.
I, I think they're one of the same. You're trying to, you're trying to be solution minded, and you're trying to cater to everybody else's, their lights and dislikes, right? We got to come to a happy medium here for everyone. I mean, because currently, right now, in a B2 designation, he's not outside the box and doing, doing B2. He's well within his rights, right?
That's not, that's not the question for tonight. The question is, you move to RM1.
I understand, I understand what, this is what's been brought up, so let's be fair. Let's go apples to apples. Everyone's brought up what they want, but no one has really sat and thought through what can be done, what you can do, right? So, I'm giving an alternative solution to a problem.
And again, you, people bring up, the primary function of the planning commission is to see that the community's values are aligning going forward with new construction and development.
I, I understand, but by what we've submitted and how we're presenting it, we meet all the criteria. Now, it's up to you guys. Now, you're going to tell me that we're just going to take what the community says and we're going to throw away rules and laws. Is that kind of around that?
What, what rules and laws are being thrown away?
Well, I say, the designation is RM1, R1, and B, right?
Correct.
So, I'm within those three. So, if I meet the criteria and I'm able to apply for it, why wouldn't I be able to get the designation for RM1? You said it's all community based.
Because we're not just representing you, we're representing the entire community here.
Right, but if you have the facts.
And we have, we have had a lot of public input that's going against us.
Okay. But if you've had the facts presented to you and you can see where they were within the rules and the designations and the master plan that you guys have in place, then you would have to weigh both options here and say, "Okay, I see this, I see that. We've got to have scales of justice here. We can't have one way and the other." I'm just asking for an impartial.
It's always one way or the other at the end.
No, it's not.
Well, the way the master plan is right now, it is in review, and there is, change is going to be made to it.
No, but if it keeps dragging, it keeps dragging and dragging, then by that time, the master plan will be rewritten, and then there's no opportunity, and then what? That it's designated as just R1, that's it?
Yes.
Then at that point, he suffered ill harm because he's had no chance to build. You can't build one house there for 1.5 million dollars. I, I mean, by the time you put that in there, nobody's paying that. You don't have water access. All you have is a view of the water. That's it.
Which, which a view of the water is worth a million dollars.
What?
A view of the water is probably worth a million dollars. That's not even ours to get into what that's valued.
Listen, if you have a lake view, a lake view is worth more than if I'm looking at some trees. Can we agree on that?
Okay.
You don't think so?
Well.
Well, why are people drawn to this community then? Are they drawn to the lake? Are they drawn to the water?
They're drawn to the community for the rural aspect that we have.
But they're drawn to the water. Let's not, let's not say they're not.
Well, I don't live on the water, and I like where I live. I'm on eight acres.
I understand, but other people are drawn to water, and that's why they want to live in the water.
And we've taken in a lot of comments over the years, even looking at recent survey comments that have gone through McKenna about the rural culture and the rural community. An increased human density and going to a multiple residence does not seem to align with that, speaking for myself.
But McKenna said it did.
Basically, when they say a recommendation, they're saying that if you choose to accept this, it would be in compliance.
And that's what I just said previously. If we're in compliance and we need that, I mean, I, I understand others' issues. I mean, at that point, then I would be, from a community standpoint, going, "Okay, as long as you don't build a giant salt box there and block everybody's view and it raises our values, I think it's a good project."
Well, what was the reason then Mr. Iannucci went from B2 to R1 where he's at?
I think he lives there.
I live there.
Correct.
He's not here. He's not here.
All the surrounding properties are R1, huh?
Roger knows we all changed to R1 for that reason, not to be in a community of townhouses and.
I was at, I was at my daddy's, if I would change, I said, "Yes, I would have built a house there."
And you, Roger, no. You wouldn't be in that house if you didn't change to R1. And you know for a fact, you can make enough money if you build a house there. We're not all stupid.
All right, all right, all right.
I just want to say, Roger, if he doesn't have a plan, I don't trust him for a minute.
Okay, all right.
This is a zoning meeting, not a.
That's a no. All right.
This is not planned, this is, this is zoning, this isn't a building meeting. And that has to go through a whole different meeting.
All right. Anybody else got anything from the board?
Just one quick thing, okay? If it does go through with RM1 like that, then we've got to come back now when you decide what they're going to build there with the heights and all that stuff. I mean.
Well, that's already, that would be already. The possibility is already determined.
Yes.
That's already been determined, height, all that's.
All that could be determined already, yes. At that point, being RM1, he could put as many units in there as he would like.
And he can go as high as he wants.
Well, there's, there's the, there's still, he would have to meet the height requirements at that point in time.
Yes, yes.
But, unit wise, in lighting and stuff like that, he could do what.
Okay.
So, my question is, is anybody ready to entertain a motion?
I'll entertain a motion to deny the RM1 designation.
All right. Is there a second on the board?
I'll second it.
All right. All in favor?
Favored for the denial?
Yes.
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
So, we got.
Aye.
We got two.
Three.
How many we got? All right. Let's do roll call.
Okay.
Make it easy here. Tom Schwaehofer.
Is it to confirm or deny?
It's to, to go with the motion of denial.
So, Neil, Neil is speaking to deny the RM1.
Okay. I'm opposed to it.
You're opposed to denying it?
Yeah.
Okay.
So, you want to approve it?
Yes, he's, he's a no then. Neil McKenzie's a yes. Ellen Jones?
I want to deny the motion of denial. I guess that's what it's saying.
Okay. Carol?
Approved.
James Arlo?
Approved.
Chris?
No.
Roger?
Approved.
Yes. Five to three did not, the denial goes through. Next thing on the agenda, site plan review for Sean Treadway.
Does everyone have a copy of the notice of ordinance violation?
Yeah.
In regards to the stipulations that were given at the last planning commission meeting, we still have the violations of the dumpster enclosure. The header for the garage door is not done. There's still stuff leaning against the building and, but it was significantly cleaned up from last inspection, and the fence is ninety percent done, but it still needs a gate. So, under the circumstances that were given at the last meeting. And the pictures that you see are from today. I will entertain a motion on the approval or denial of the site plan.
Is that correct?
Correct. Well, most of the public comment should have been done for the agenda items on, on I, but go ahead if you would like to speak.
Okay.
Now, I was here last month, said thirty days was not enough time. I completed, I'm going to mix up the header on the garage door and the stuff that was out front. Okay? I just got handed by Nick Tuesday. This year, I did not have this, the requirement on the dumpster enclosure.
I believe the dumpster enclosure was on the list from the last meeting, correct?
Yes. Okay. I just got this yesterday. When did that, when did the dumpster enclosure ordinance take effect?
I wouldn't be able to tell you that at this point.
There's three other businesses in Cotterville that doesn't have a dumpster enclosure either. Okay?
Okay.
Okay. And the fence issue that you brought up, I gave it down here, and I got a fence permit. They approved my fence permit. It was a wood fence, okay? If I put a.
That's not.
Pardon? Pardon?
Even though it was brought up on the combust material, that's not something that.
That is correct.
It's not something that's listed on our, from the township, so that's not.
Yes, I just wanted to clear that up. I got two neighbors across the street that have the exact same wood fence.
That wood fence is not an issue for us.
The wood fence is not an issue, it's the.
The berm is not an issue either.
No. But the question of the, being ninety percent done and still needs a gate is the issue.
The gate, the gate was never brought up. This was something, every time we come to the meeting, they're changing the rules again. Where does, where do they want the gate at?
Well, it's either a gate or you have to enclose the, the area totally so you can't see in it. That's the, that was, I believe, the way it was written originally.
Uh, no, it wasn't. The original site plan that got approved, okay, was, was never a gate.
Well, gate's going to, is going to go with the full enclosure, is on, I mean.
Okay. Second of all, if the gate.
The gate would have to, you're going to have a full enclosure, you're going to have a gate for egress, you know, entrance and egress, so.
Right. According to the fire marshal, he, um, there's no way to put a gate there. If I do, if I have a rolling gate, if I put it next to my building, and when I open the gate for normal business, it's going to be out in the roadway. Nick and I just talked about that this morning.
Greg, is there any light you can shed on this with Nick?
I asked Nick to meet here. At the last meeting, we had McKenna put together the plan of, of what would be required for a site plan approval. Joe sat over there, and before the meeting ended, I asked you if you understood what was on that plan, and you said yes. They, they gave you thirty days to complete that plan.
You told me that I had thirty days to complete what Nick.
They, they, no, they told you that you had thirty days because they included what the McKenna had offered, what McKenna had put together in their, uh, their review. That's what we're looking for. So, if, and I asked him if he wanted to copy that, and he said he had one.
And I got it yesterday.
Well, I asked you that night if you had a copy. If you needed a copy, I'd give you a copy. So, it's, I will say he's made significant progress. Is he done? No. How quickly can he finish the last couple items on the list?
I asked for sixty days, and you gave me thirty.
You asked for sixty days, they gave you thirty.
That's correct.
You've had five years. Um, excuse me. I'm going to leave it up to you guys how you guys want to handle it. I, I'm not going to make my recommendation because it's going to end up in my hands anyway. But that's the progress. What Nick, I had Nick go out Monday, and I had Nick go out again this morning.
And you said this, this update was from this morning, correct?
This update was from this morning. These pictures are from this morning.
Question being, was there any changes from Monday to today?
I, I believe he did do a few things from Monday to today because he was given that list on Monday, and, and Nick went over that list again with him to make sure he understood it. Again, some of those requirements were no cars for more than seventy-two hours, which is technically the ordinance. And we discussed that pop-up camper, which.
Is still there.
Has been there since at least November that I know of, and you said it's a different camper, but I have the same picture showing the same thing. I think the Mustang that was next door has been moved, but that was only moved since Monday because I saw it there the other day. So, those are all items that, that, that I told you we would enforce if they approved the site plan. Now, how you handle that business is, don't let people bring you their cars when you've bring you their cars when you got fourteen cars packed blocking in the lot, and fire trucks can't get in there. I mean, a fire truck can't get in that lot right now if your building caught on fire, they can't get up to it.
I talked to Joe Slicer, he will not fight a fire from the lot, from the roadway.
Well, I mean, it's still, it still creates significant access issues for the firefighters to get to your building. We, that was evident last December when your building caught fire. Nobody's picking on you, Joe. We've been working with you, and I've been working with you since I took, the day I took office, I've been working with you.
Okay.
So, I'm gonna let you guys make your decision on how you want the board to proceed, or if you want to approve the site plan, with the understa... Again, I, he's made significant progress, bravo, I'll give him that, but it's caught, the constant bringing him in front of you guys has made that progress. Me talking to him, knocking on his door, hasn't done it. It, it, it's only under the threat of you guys shutting him down has he decided to make progress.
And we, the township did have, the township did have to enter into legal actions at one point?
We, a week before I took office, we had, we had a judgment, and I think we ended up towing an RV, a couple boats, several cars. He had license plates confiscated because he was driving personal vehicles with in-transit plates. At that time, he didn't have a business, his mechanic's license was revoked. Had, since then, he's gotten a new business, he's gotten a new business license under Joe's Garage instead of Marine City Auto. We towed, we, we took a, a storage container, we allowed him to keep one of his storage containers. We towed, we took one of his storage containers. So yeah, we did some enforcement action, and, and that, that judgment's still in force. I can, I can go tow stuff tomorrow if I wanted to. I had chosen not to, I've, I've tried to work with him, and, and have you guys direct what needs to be done. So yeah, again, he's made significant progress. How you guys wanna handle it, I mean, he's given us word in the past, so take it for what it's worth. And that's, that's, I mean, that's where it is. He's made significant progress even since Monday. How quick he can complete the other items, that's on him, that he'd have to answer that.
Yes, sir.
I wanna know what happened to the four-foot berm. He's supposed to have, he signed it, that was one of the first things that come along, a four-foot berm in a fence. He can't afford a four-foot berm.
The four-foot berm got turned down because of the utilities when the gas line went through the line.
Well, I hate to tell you this, Joel, the directional board, the directional board and everything, they don't dig holes.
It's a rudder, but you cannot put a berm on top of a road.
That's what happened to it? It's wrong?
Like I say, Tom, this is what was brought up to us from the inspector at this point, and that's what we are looking at ruling on.
Well, the first meeting I come to...
We don't have any demonstration complaints.
We don't...
What?
I think it was to require a ten-foot site.
Yeah, the ordinance, we do have high dogs, that's why the berm may not be approved.
We don't have a demonstration complaint, so I don't...
So just when we talked about this before, we started going back to the original site, right?
Yes.
The way I understood it?
Yes.
We gave him the thirty, well, the site plan we talked about, the original one came from, okay?
Well...
No.
No, this is the new site plan that is sunned on.
This one is thrown up on here?
Uh, no, that's actually for the other one.
If you're talking timeline, the timeline was to complete the items listed by McKenna and by Nick from the last meeting.
Right, that's, that's this one here that is sunned up here, the sketch I got.
This is, this is a site plan that...
Correct.
We potentially could approve or deny.
Right, okay. But, so under this one here, it doesn't show nothing about a berm or nothing, talk about that?
No, correct, no, correct.
That's not, that's not, that's not on this.
This is actually a new site plan.
Okay, that's what I'm getting at.
I don't know, many of the items on here are from the McKenna report, he had already had a bunch of things.
Put to work on these.
Before we gave him the thirty days.
Correct. Correct, it hasn't been, it has not been...
Like Greg says, that's making a move, and we don't have any more.
And then when you have future issues, you're not gonna have any cooperation.
All right, I will entertain a motion. Would anybody like to make a motion? I will make a motion to deny the site plan for Sean Treadway at the location of Joe's Garage formerly Marine City Auto, address of eighty-four ninety-four River Road.
I'll second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Against?
No.
Me? No. Okay. Motion carries. All right, new business, rezoning application for Mr. and Mrs. Jarvis, partial ID number one-seven-dash-seven-six-nine-dash-zero-zero-zero-six-dash-zero-zero-zero from B2 to R1. Any discussion?
I'll make the motion to approve the change from B2 to R1.
I'll second it.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Against? Okay, motion carries. Uh, any more public comment? Sure.
I have a note that I, I feel compelled to share just in terms of procedure. I didn't bring it up during the business item, it's for the Ayunuchi motion, because I needed to do a bit of research and get caught up on it, but I wanted to recommend that you make a correction to the motion. So for a rezoning, it's actually a recommendation to the township board, so they have the final decision on rezonings. It's really just a procedural thing, but I think the motion was to just deny, that needs to be revised to say, I recommend that the township board deny.
Okay.
The other thing is that when you make a decision or a recommendation for a final decision for a rezoning, you should have a findings of fact, so that's basically your reasoning as to why you're making that decision. And so, I have some language I wrote down how you could go about amending your motion. You need to have someone make a motion that voted in favor of it, so anyone that voted in favor of the original motion to deny can make a motion to reconsider the motion. And I'm sorry, I know this is a little silly with the wording here, but I just wanna make sure the township is, you know, protected, doing things in the proper way. So if, if I could...
Sure.
...over would like. And then, so the two things you'll wanna include when you go to amend it are to make it a recommendation to the township board, which was missing from the original motion, and then secondly, to include a findings of fact. So this is really just the commission's reasoning for your decision. Based on the discussion tonight, it sounds like there are two primary things, one being the public hearing comments that were heard tonight. You could just simply mention that based on the findings of fact, that we have heard a lot of opposition from the, about the request from the public. And then, secondly, it sounds like there's an alternative zoning district, R1 versus RM1, that could be appropriate and also supported by your master plan. So those are the two things I would include in terms of your findings of fact. And I'm happy to guide you through this, I just wanna make sure that your motion is proper because, again, you know, to protect the township, so...
Okay. So this would be, this motion would be done by Neil then, correct?
Sure, anyone...
Who made the original motion.
Anyone that supported that motion could make a motion to reconsider, so that's the first step. Correct. But he's also welcome to do it.
I'll do it.
Okay.
So we formally have to do that now?
Correct, uh, yeah, I would recommend following any other public comment because we're on the public comment item right now. And then, you know, next is commissioner comments and announcements, that would be a good place to do it, so...
Okay.
That first sentence on that paper, you'll make that motion first, you'll have to approve that, then once you're formally ready to reconsider, anyone really could make the motion to amend the original, and that amendment would be to, again, change it to be a recommendation to the township board, and then to include a findings of fact, and again...
I think that's basically understood, isn't it? I mean, our relationship to the township board is, anything we have is really a recommendation, they have the final say. So I think that operationally, that's, that's completely understood.
I can see that.
I mean, introducing the, the finding of fact can certainly make sense.
Yeah.
And, and, but I also think that was kind of recorded within our session since we were recorded live.
Sure, again, really, it's, it's semantics, right? It's just a few key words that I just noticed that...
Okay.
You know, so, just my recommendation, wanted to make sure you guys have all your Ts crossed, so...
All right, I'll make the motion. Wait a minute, let's go back here to, any other public comments?
Is it regarding me or anything?
Uh, this is anything at this point.
Am I gonna come back up again here with this? Did you redo it?
Uh, that, it's just a motion that's going to... Yes, to go back to, that we're gonna recommend to the board, the township board, that this go from, stay B2 instead of going to RM1.
Yeah, I want it to stay B2. If it doesn't go R1, stay B2, correct?
Correct.
Good.
All right, any other public comments? All right, I move to reconsider the vote on the motion relating to the Ayunuchi rezoning request from B2 to RM1. I am one that voted in favor of the motion. Now I have to put this before a vote, correct?
To reconsider, you do need to have a second.
Okay.
Okay, I'll, I'll support it, it's reconsidered.
Okay. Now I have to amend the motion?
It, it could be you or anybody, but yes, now you can make a motion to amend the original.
Okay.
What are we amending?
That's a good question. Are we changing the original motion then?
Yes, so again, this is really just to cover the township spaces in terms of the requirements when you're making a motion. If the decision were challenged in court, they will look at the meeting minutes, and the specific language of the motion will be looked at. And so, that's why I mentioned having it, say, a recommendation to the township board, because that's the procedure in your ordinance.
Okay.
Uh, and then the findings of fact are also what would be potentially scrutinized as to, you know, understanding why the commission made that decision. So in our recommended motion, we included a, a line about, based on the findings of fact in the planner's report, but because you decided to deny instead of approve, you still have to make a findings of fact statement within the motion. So you could say...
And the findings of fact part would be with what the public has stated?
Correct.
And our judgment on traffic?
Sure.
Lighting?
Yes.
Stuff like that.
And, you know, the other piece is that the master plan supports an alternative district, the R1 district, that the commission, it sounds like, and please correct me if I'm wrong, but finds more appropriate than the one that's being requested. So, you know, it could be that you say, I move to amend the previously adopted motion to include these statements essentially, that it's a recommendation to the township board that is based on the findings of fact, and then you can fill in whatever those findings that you see fit.
Okay. All right, I move to amend the motion to state that under the public scrutiny and the... The way that the area should be in our eyes, R1, this is a recommendation to the township board to leave it as B2 at this point.
To deny the rezoning request.
To deny the zoning request. Is there anything else I need to do?
I think that covered it, yes.
Okay.
I'll second it.
All right. Roll call? Tom Schwa-Hafer?
I, I'm against it, I think.
Okay. Okay.
If I understood it right.
Neil McKenzie?
I agree with that statement.
Ellen Jones?
I think I'm for this, because what we're saying is it has to go back to the board to decide, right?
Correct.
So I agree.
Carol?
I agree.
Okay. James?
I'm for, yeah, go back here.
Chris?
I'm for the amended motion.
Roger?
Yes.
Lance, yes. Alrighty. Any other commissioner comments or announcements?
Do we have to do the same for just going to the R1 from B1?
No, I think we were fine with that one, weren't we?
So, which one? For the Jarvis decision, so I didn't catch the specific motion language, but I'd say if it was the same where you said, I motioned to make this decision, I'd still include those two items, so the recommendation to the township board, and then the findings of fact.
Okay.
Do we have the original motion?
The original motion was just approved from B2 to R1.
From B2 to R1.
So I'd recommend amending that one as well, again, just to cover your bases.
I will go back to my original motion, and I will recommend to the township board that the property for the Jarvis property, parcel number ID seventeen-dash-seven-six-nine dash-zero-zero-zero-six-dash-zero-zero-zero, go from B1 to, or B2 from, to R1 with, the reason being is because three-quarters of the area there is already R1.
And it aligns with public input?
Yes, and it aligns with the public input also, yes.
And the recommendation to the board.
Alrighty. All in favor?
Yes.
Aye.
Nays? All right, motion carries. Thank you, Alexa. Any other commissioner comments? Do I hear a motion for adjournment?
I make a motion that we during the meeting? I'll second.
All in favor?
Yes.
Aye.
Nays? Motion carries.